Pledge of Allegiance. We're gonna have Gil Lopez from Romero Cruz Elementary, uh, give us our, our, our pledge of allegiance. What grade are you in Gil?
Um, I'm in 4th grade.
4th grade? Okay, when you speak right now, get really close to the microphone, okay?
Okay.
Alright, go ahead please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which is stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much Gil. If you can all remain standing. Erica Wakelin, our police chaplain, is gonna give us our invocation. Thank you again Gil.
Thank you Mayor. I'm, uh, pleased to be here as the chaplain, but also as one of the dads, uh, one of these volleyball players. So, this is a fun double shot for me tonight. So, let's, let's pray together. Almighty God, we thank you for this great city of Santa Ana, and we thank you for the leaders and servants that are here to, to serve this city. I pray that you would give wisdom, Lord, that you would give, uh, this meeting a, a great sense of, of unity together, and that we would, uh, just continue to see, uh, wonderful things happen in this city. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Thank you. You may be seated. If I can have representatives from the Nam Vietnamese Eatery, if you can please come forward at this time and just stand with me here to the right and join me. Standing to my right are representatives from Nam Vietnamese Eatery, and it's a new restaurant that opened here in the city, really right across street from Santa Ana College, right there on 17th and Bristol. And they're doing something in association with, um, Earth Day. And let me read this, uh, about y'all a little bit, then if you'd wanna speak, before I present the proclamation, I'd like for you to say a few words. Earth Day is an annual event, um, on April 22nd that's celebrated in more than 122 countries to demonstrate support for environmental protection. It was created in 1970 by Yaler Nelson, a US Senator from Wisconsin, after he witnessed the ravages of a 1969 massive oil spill in Santa Barbara, California. Earth Day broadens the base of support for environmental programs, rekindles public commitment, and builds community activism around the world through a broad range of events and activities promoting environmental protection. Earth Day has become the largest civic event in the world, celebrated simultaneously around the globe by people of all backgrounds, faiths, and nationalities. More than a billion people participate in Earth Day every year. The city of Santa Ana recognizes its responsibility to preserve and protect the environment, and the importance of environmentally responsible businesses such as, 'cause you might be saying, "Well, what's a restaurant got to do with Earth Day?" Now let me, for a moment, to feature, uh, Nam Vietnamese Eatery. Nam Vietnamese Eatery is a new fresh casual restaurant that opened in Santa Ana in R.S. 2014. The concept of Nam emerged from a desire to introduce the community to fresh, delicious, healthy, affordable Vietnamese food, also with a minimal impact on the environment. So, you know, where they source their food, uh, you know, buying local, promoting local, environmentally friendly, organic, all this is part of what they do. Nam Vietnamese Eatery promotes this environmentally friendly practice through its use of, uh, compostable paper goods, and also eco-friendly products, like your, your, your cups and things, or bowls, they're biodegradable, and when we throw them away, they don't harm the planet like other things do. They believe in taking care of our planet and the people living on it. Nam has been involved in several programs to help our community, and currently offers two scholarships to Santa Ana College, and there they also sponsor the basketball teams. So, look, it's good for a restaurant that doesn't have to do all these things that they're doing to, to create this consciousness, and to say, "We can all do something every day to make Earth Day, uh, very meaningful." And, and look, with all the problems on the planet, and all the things we're seeing happening wrong in, in Mother Nature, um, there's certainly something more that we can all do. And here's a good example of what Nam Vietnamese Eatery is doing. And also, by the way, the food's really good. My, my son goes there and brings back, you know, to-go dishes. He's, he's a vegan, and you have a lot of vegan plates and all that. It's very, very good cuisine. So with that, before I give you the proclamation, would either one of you like to say a few words?
I mean, I guess we can, you did a good job at talking about our concept, but like, um, he mentioned we use compostable containers only, so there's no plastic, there's no tree in everything that we use. We don't use foam either, or plastic bags. So when you come and eat at our place, you're also supporting that idea. Uh, so I hope that for those of you who don't know about us, we're, uh, right across from the college, in the Bristol marketplace, near Starbucks, so we hope that you can, uh, come and visit us and give us a try. Thank you.
Well, look, if you, you can step over here. I think you have a photographer, maybe we can... You ever take some photos? But somehow, we ended up with two, but it's good. One, one is a certificate of recognition of the restaurant, and you can obviously hang it there with pride, but the other one is specifically talking about Earth Day and the work that you do. So congratulations, and thank you very much for your work.
Thank you.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Councilman Roman Reyna, if you can come on down, sir, and if, uh, the volleyball team he, uh, from Calvary Christian School, if you're here, please come on down, and I'll now turn things over to Councilman Reyna.
Boy, they were ready, they were ready to run it, yeah. That's great. That's great. Fantastic. We're gonna ask them to come on all up. Don't be shy. All the way on up.
You know, uh, many know that, that youth are definitely my passion and, and my focus, and when we, we work with them, and we plant that seed of change, and we watch it cultivate, it turns into beautiful things. And, and our community, one that I definitely, uh, talk about is Suave Sito. You watch those kids just absolutely grow. Today, we have the next generation of leaders right behind us, uh, in championships when it comes to specific sports. Sports is an incredible, uh, educational component. It teaches you discipline, teaches you teamwork, it teaches you determination, and to come, overcome obstacles, that perseverance, to overcome, and overcome, and overcome, and not stop. And in this particular case, these young ladies over at Calvary, uh, Christian Church, uh, has come into the championship, which is absolutely fantastic. So let's give them a round of applause for the girls volleyball team in winning the second Champions League championship. So real briefly about, uh, Calvary Christian School, the athletic program has been established over 30 years, comprising of 5th graders through 8th graders, which serve in a multiple of sports. Today, we have the volleyball team. This year's team was very successful, this year's sports program was very successful, as the boys', uh, and girls' elementary basketball team, uh, placed 2nd in the league. So let's give them a round of applause as well. At this point, I'm gonna ask the coach to come on up and share a few moments, uh, about this, this season, or some championships. Someone wanna come on up and share? No pressure, no pressure.
Um, hi. So my girls, as you can see, we have like, a bunch of really young girls who just started playing volleyball for the first time, and had no idea even how it works, but then they all grew a ton, and they improved, and they became really good athletes and teammates over the season, and obviously, they got good enough to win the championship, so that was really awesome to see them grow and do all that, so, yeah.
And how about if we hear from one of the students? Maybe the team captain? Okay, well then, how about one of the students stepping on up? Oh, she seems to be eager, come on up. Don't be shy. That's what I like. Absolutely. The mic is yours, you can...
Hello? Oh, my name is Mia. Um, I was part of the volleyball team, and, uh, we just improved on teamwork, and we formed a family, and, uh, we all worked together. And even after we fell a lot and hit each other, it was really fun.
You know, the, the, the season's trials and tribulations really, uh, bring the, the team together, and are able to overcome obstacles. And you can see as they are our championship girls this year, and we're hoping to, uh, repeat for the third year, and have you guys back again next year. Coach, I'm gonna go ahead and give you all of the awards, so you can hand them out. Uh, thank you so very much. One more time, let's give them a round of applause. Ladies, thank you so very much. Congratulations.
Thank you, Councilman Reyna, and now, if we could have Councilmember, former Mayor Protem Salteina Hedo, please a step, uh, towards the microphone, and if they're the, uh, the wrestlers from Santa Ana High School, if you could please come on down. You have the floor, uh, Councilmember.
We could have the mighty saints come on down. As they're coming down, I wanna just, uh, let you know a little bit about the Santa Ana wrestling program. Uh, the Santa Ana, Santa Ana wrestling program is a winning, is an award-winning high school boys' wrestling team. It has accomplished some great things, uh, since, uh, Coach Glab has been there, and one of them is winning 23 consecutive league championships. Along with that, is winning 12 CIF championships, 10 CIF, uh, 10 of his wrestlers have been the CIF runner-ups. 31 individuals from his team have been CIF champions. And also, he has three Masters champions. Aside from that, he's had two students win the national high school wrestling competition. So he's had two national champions. To think about the work that you all do here in the city of Santa Ana, it used to be Calvary, Cal, that's a different Calvary, but you know Calvary Chapel down the street, we, we talk about them every once in a while. They're in close to Mesa, they don't really count that much. But, uh, that used to be the best wrestling team in Orange County, until someone had a desire to show that our kids had, have, our kids possess what it takes to win national championships, and that's what's so special about Santa Ana wrestling. And so, this season, six wrestlers qualified for the Masters. For you to understand this, there's about 550 wrestlers, and the top six get to go onto the Masters. And if you've ever been to a Masters competition, they're quick, huh? Everybody's fast, they're strong, and they're ugly. But we're ugly too, right? And so, uh, I just wanted to say that this is something that is truly, uh, something that we need to celebrate here in our city, and we are incredibly proud of you, incredibly proud of you. I always tell this, 'cause I used to box, the only butt kicking I ever took was from a wrestler. All of a sudden, I was on the ground, he had me in a banana split. You know what that is? I almost cried. Anyways, that's a bad memory. Let's talk about the good things again. So I wanna call up the coach. Coach, if you could come up. Coach Glab couldn't make it, but Coach Gonzalez, uh, Gonzalo Perez is here, and, uh, I just wanted to give you the mic, so you can say a few words here.
Good evening. Okay, um, I'm really proud to be, uh, associated with, uh, these young men. At the beginning of the year, we were not even, uh, ranked in the top 10. By the end of the year, we, uh, we took 2nd place in the individuals, uh, and it's a young team, so we are gonna be in the hunt for CIF championship next year, God willing. Thank you. They all work very hard.
Well, Coach, I have your certificates here. If you could, uh, pass them out to everyone, and I just wanna thank you for coming out, and again, keep doing the good work. And one of the things about Santa Ana wrestling, they always give back to the community, and they volunteer, and they coach kids as, as, as small as 3, right? Or 5, 5. 5 to 13 years old, to continue this tradition going. So thank you very much for coming out here. Congratulations, you're all champions. Good work.
Okay, now I'm gonna direct our attention to the consent calendar, but before that, Madam City Attorney, is there anything to report out of closed session, please?
Uh, Mayor and Councilmembers, we do have a couple of reportable action items. We had four closed session items this evening, three of existing litigation. In the case of David Stone versus the city, the city council unanimously agreed to settle this case in the amount of $15,000 contribution from the city. In the amount of Johnny Hernandez in that matter, the city council unanimously approved a settlement of $54,280. And in the Timothy Scovall matter, another workers' comp case, the city council agreed to a settlement of $93,662.50. Finally, in the matter of the public employee appointment and employment, the city council has, um, confirmed or affirmed an appointment of a new planning and building agency executive director, also by unanimous vote.
Thank you. So with that, um, let's now move our attention to the, uh, consent calendar.
Mr. Mayor, 25A, please.
Okay, 25A, and on 25I, Madam Clerk, I'm gonna abstain, I may have received a contribution from some of the vendors associated with that event, so, uh, in the abundance of caution, I'm just gonna abstain on that. Any other items that Councilmembers wanna pull?
I'd like to move, uh, the remainder of the consent calendar, make a motion...
Thank you, thank you, Councilmember Sarmiento. Those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
We have a speaker on one of the items. Alright, let's pull 25G from that. So I'll entertain a motion on the balance. Those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, those opposed, motion passes unanimously. Uh, so, Councilor Sarmiento, you had an item, and also we have 25G, I believe it is.
I did. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and I just wanted to see if staff could give us just a pre, uh, just a brief background on this one, uh, Mr. City Manager, or is that, or would that be, uh...
Which item is the chief?
25A. I think it might be the chief's item, if he, uh, if he wants to address it. I, either one of you do...
Yes, uh, I could do that. This is the crossing guard?
Yes.
Uh, thank you, uh, Mayor Protem, Mayor, Member of City Council. Uh, we had previously had this item on the agenda, and we continued it, uh, to do more outreach with the, with the school, uh, district. We met twice with the superintendent. Uh, we also, uh, met with the, uh, Public Safety Director for the school district, and based on all those discussions, uh, we had a meeting, uh, with the, uh, parade committee, I know, Public Safety, uh, and brought it to the Public Safety Committee. We did a thorough, uh, review. We have, uh, uh, a consensus with the school district for this level of crossing guard services, but I wanted to assure the mayor and the council that we have a very large contingency of 15 percent. So if any time during the school year, uh, we need to add a crossing guard, we can do that. Uh, and so, uh, based on the recommendation of the, uh, subcommittee, the consensus with the school district, we're recommending this, uh, contract.
Great, so the subcommittee recommended this, uh, so there's a net reduction in the number of, uh, crossing guards as a, as a result of this action item, but we do have some, some funds available in the, in the event that we need to adjust if we see some need for that.
Yes, Mayor.
I know there were some concerns from, from some of our colleagues and the public when this came before us already, but look, I just wanted to make sure that we did a thorough, um, vetting of this with the school district as well as us. Um, I just wanted to open it up and make it available for my colleagues if there was any concern or any comments, 'cause I know there was the last time around, but thank you for doing all that due diligence in the interim, I appreciate that.
Okay, so is that a motion?
That's a motion unless there's some questions or concern or...
Let's take a motion in a second, and now, are there any questions?
No questions.
No questions? Those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, those opposed, motion carries.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker.
Before we continue, I'd like for us to contemplate, uh, an excused absence for Councilwoman Michelle Martinez. Doesn't have to be a unanimous vote, maybe, uh, maybe a 4-2 would give her something to think about, but, but, but maybe unanimous is better, 'cause she didn't, uh, call in, and there's an advantage to that.
I'll move it based upon that nice preface.
I'll second.
We have a motion, a second. Is it unanimous?
Aye.
Tell her it was unanimous if she asks, but with discussion. So with that, 25G, I, I think we have Lily Graham, you want, wish to speak to us on, on this item? Please come on down, and after you're, you speak, I'll bring it to council for consideration. Just take that other microphone, yeah?
Hi, good evening, some council member. Um, I'm here from Public Law Center, and we're just willing to address any questions you had about our program. Um, we're a pro bono law firm that provides free legal services to, um, to Orange County residents, so if you got any questions about the ESG funding, please let me know.
Thank you. And what, what item was it, Madam Clerk?
25G.
25G?
Yes.
Got it. Got it. So we're clear on which item we're on? I would entertain a motion.
So moved.
Second. Those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, those opposed, motion carries unanimously. You were very persuasive. Thank you.
Thank you.
So with that, um, I think, are we to the, uh, business calendar?
Is it...
No, no, let's, let's just right now, keep going. Michelle's not here, we'll tell her later. 55A, I would entertain a motion.
Motion approved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, those opposed, motion carries unanimously. 55B, I would entertain a motion.
Motion approved.
Motion, Councilman Reyna will second, and now he has a question. Go ahead, please.
Uh, question for the staff. The bungalows that we're, that we're talking about, and I apologize, but if you could, uh, share with me which ones are we referring to? Are we the ones, talking about the ones that were currently operating out of now in the back of the centennial?
Uh, correct, they're in the old fire training facility, which is now the police training facility, so those will remain there.
I got you. Well, that's all the question I have. Thank you.
So your second stance?
Absolutely.
Alright, those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, those opposed, motion carries unanimously. 75A, this is a, a public hearing, and, uh, was there a request for a continuance on this? I believe there is. Let's, George, let's just hold off when we take this up. George is good, he's raising his hand, that's a good sign. He's nodding, uh, with a friendly yes as well, so, um...
I guess I have a question for staff. Do, um, was the request just to continue? Do we wanna just open the public hearing, so it doesn't have to be reposted, and then you immediately close it? You don't take comment, but you open and continue it?
Okay, let me open the public hearing. Um, let me acknowledge that I thank God, see nobody stepping forward to the microphone, 'cause we're not gonna take any comment, but we did open it, so I will now close the public hearing, and when we bring this up, I believe in two weeks, uh, we don't have to repost it.
Correct. It's efficient.
So is, George said he's okay. Yeah. We checked in. Any...
What, how long is a continuance for?
It's a, it's a recommendation or request?
To the next meeting?
So, two weeks?
Thank you, Madam.
Okay, so with that, I would entertain a motion.
So moved. Second.
Those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, those opposed, motion carries, and thank you, George.
Welcome.
Thank you. I'm sure your comments will get better in two weeks. Good. No, no, but thank you for being here. Um, now, uh, 75B, this is a time and pace for the public hearing relative to the development block grant, uh, fiscal year 2015-16. Let me go ahead and open up the public hearing.
Mayor, I'll be recusing myself from this one due to my relationship with one of the applicants.
And Councilman Reyna, I think you have to do the same.
Mayor, I'll be doing the same thing, I just wanted to, just make a real quick, uh, brief statement that I'm, I'm happy, uh, that this program is now back into the hands of, of nonprofits. I love the process that was out there, uh, and happy that we're supporting in that direction, and I'm glad that CDBG is, again, used for the nonprofits. Thank you.
Thank you for that comment. So with that, um, let me call on Lily Graham, you wish to speak to us about 75B, and I see a late entry there in Rick Iden, but that's on another topic, right? Not on this. Okay, so 75B, and then after that, Jillian Flag, and Jillian, if you're here, you're from Goodwill, just go ahead and sit maybe on the second row, and we'll call you shortly. And then Kathleen Bowman from, uh, Wise Place, a wonderful organization, if you can be on standby as well. Please go ahead, Lily.
Um, same comment as earlier, um, pro bono law firm, and we are excited about the CDBG funding available. Um, we're really hoping to expand, um, our mobile home advocacy, because there's been a lot of issues that we've seen in Santa Ana, so that's why we applied for this, um, CDBG funding.
Thank you, Lily.
Thank you.
Jillian, are you here?
I am.
And Kathleen, are you? Oh, there you are. Welcome. Go ahead, please, Jillian.
Hello. Um, hello, Mayor, and hello, council members. Um, I just wanted to bring to your attention, um, the valuable organization that Goodwill is. We've been in Santa Ana for over 90 years. We could be a valuable resource, and this money would be very valuable to us. We would use it for our good jobs program, and it would help, um, close to 50, if not more, Santa Ana residents get and keep jobs, and they would get, um, job training, get placement and supportive services, and, uh, we would just, uh, really appreciate and, um, really encourage you to reconsider or, um, allocate some resources, um, toward Goodwill of Orange County. Thank you.
Thank you, Jillian. I can tell you got a nay in penmanship, um, no, very, look at this. Kathleen, please go ahead.
Good evening. Thank you so much, and thank you for, uh, Councilman Ray's, uh, comments about putting CDBG back into, uh, the hands of nonprofits. We really appreciate that. I just want to, I was here a couple of weeks ago, you didn't make a decision then, so I just want to come before you again and encourage you to take the thoughtful, the, um, the recommendations from the commission, and we thank you for the support of homeless women here in Wise, here at Wise Place, that we take the women off the streets of Santa Ana and do move them to self-sufficiency. So thank you.
Thank you, Kathleen. You do excellent work, and you've done it for many years, and it makes such a difference in so many women's lives. So with that, um, let me bring it back to council, let me call on, on Mayor Protem Vincenzo Sarmiento, if I may?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and I think, um, all of us are real proud of the fact that we've reintroduced this process. I know, for many of us, I know I was, I was the mayor's appointee to the Human Relations Commission back when we had one, and we had, I think, a million dollars back then that we used to be able to allocate to different nonprofits and organizations, and it was a great way to be able to share some valuable resources that the federal government gave us, and it was, um, it was a much more difficult process, because sometimes when you have more, there's more recipients, and there's more you wanna do, and, and it just becomes a very, um, uh, difficult, but yet gratifying way to be able to help the community, because even though there's services that are duplicative sometimes, there's no such thing for our community, there's never enough services. So even though you may have some agencies that do the same type of work, um, the volume of work that we do and the deliverables that many of those nonprofits, um, uh, you know, go through, is just, uh, sometimes, you know, a drop in the bucket from what we, what we really need in the community. So I thank everybody who applied. I just wanted to, uh, see if, um, you know, and, and this is the way we did it before as well, sometimes, um, the recommendations from the commission, uh, and what commission was it? I'm not sure of staff, if you can tell me what commission reviewed this, uh, was it...
Development?
Community and Housing? Development and Housing? Got it. So I know they absorb the responsibility of the Human Relations Commission when they used to review it, so I wanna thank them for their service, and I know that their recommendations are advisory, and so they're, they're, they're helpful, and they give us a lot of guidance, and I think they made some great selections. I think it was very diverse, the services that they recommended are, are, are great, uh, you know, they're, they're, they impact different communities, but they're, we, we always realize that there's sometimes room for adjustment to be made, and sometimes, um, some things that are overlooked. So I wanted to see, Mr. City Manager, if we could include, um, and maybe augment that amount, uh, to include the, um, support for two, um, applicants that, that, that did very well, they provide great services. Um, one of them is here tonight, and, and that's Goodwill, and the other one is, um, the Illumination Foundation, because I see Ima Howregi out in the audience, and I know her and Sandra, uh, work very closely with them, because as we spoke about homelessness and it being such a pervasive problem in our community, um, we know the Wise Place does a great job, and we have a lot of homeless efforts and shelters and missions. Unfortunately, it's just not enough, and we're trying to tackle the problem, but Illumination Foundation has a great model program that we, we may wanna continue emulating, and hopefully other communities will do the same thing. So if we can incorporate those two, uh, Mr. City Manager, I'd, um, uh, hope you can give us some, uh, recommendation based upon that.
Thank you, uh, Mayor Protem.
Thank you, Mayor Pro Tem, Mayor, a member of the city council. That's excellent news. I didn't know that we had done a million before, so we need to do more, I think, based on that. And our budget has improved, we've got some good news in some fronts, and there's some opportunities, I think, during the next two weeks, I can take a look at it. And the total for those two organizations, Goodwill and the Illumination Foundation, would be eighty thousand dollars. So if you want to advance the ones we recommended, and I can come back in two weeks with some suggestions on how we could fund eighty thousand, we can do that if the council...
Let's do that. Let's go ahead and move it.
So that's a motion? Is there a second from?
Second.
Good. So with that, those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries unanimously. And I just want to add that, yes, we used to do about a million dollars into this, and I think it was even a little bit above that at one point, so hopefully we can bring it back. The only reason we cut it back was the budget, where we went into such a dire situation, we had to keep the doors open, we cut it back. But this is, up to fifteen percent of all this money can be used in nonprofits, and I think we ought to have that as a goal. Yes, please go ahead.
I want to say, and, you know, the, I think we rise and fall based on procedure. And I think procedure, at the end of the day, is probably the most transparent way to make sure that, that we allocate these funds, and I think we need to continue to do that as we go forward and vet every single organization properly. And go from there.
I, we've always had a pretty good process. I know it used to be the Human Relations Commission here, and they would, you were on there, Vince, it'd be like a multi-month process.
Oh, yeah.
A multi-month process.
And that million dollars wasn't really because we shut it down, but most of these monies are federal. So as they started shrinking their allocations to different communities, that's why we had to...
Everything squeezed.
Little by little, we're coming back.
We're coming back, slowly but surely. So with that, now I'm going to go to the next item. Is that eighty-five A, Madam Clerk? Okay, we have a few speakers on this item. Rick Iden and Adrian Rocha. Before we take it on, come on up, speak to us, and then we'll, we'll take it under consideration. Please go ahead, Rick Iden. Welcome.
Thank you, Mayor, council members. Thank you for taking in consideration our resolution. My name is Rick Iden. I am the Executive Vice President of UFCW Local 324. I'm also the President of the Orange County Labor Federation that unanimously passed this resolution. Representing grocery workers for the last twenty-five years here in Orange County, we have tried to raise the standards of working men and women in the food industry. And most of you know who we represent and how hard we negotiate to make sure our members earn fair wages and have affordable benefits for themselves and their families. This employer, El Super, has done just the opposite. For over a year and a half, we have been negotiating with this employer, and you can see within the resolution the many numerous things, not only that they've done to workers, but they've done to communities, in disrespecting not just the workers, but the communities. And so this boycott that we have launched late last year has been a huge struggle for not only the, the working families in these El Supers, but the communities. And we know that by getting your support, we can come to a quick resolution in getting fairness and justice for these workers. So I want to thank the council members who brought this resolution forward, and we ask for your support. Thank you.
Thank you, Rick. If you can remain up there for one, because we have any questions. Is Adrian Rocha? Go ahead, Adrian, please.
Hi, my name is Adrian Rocha. Good evening. Well, I've been working at El Super for ten years in the meat department, and we're just trying to get sick days, forty hours for full timers, and respect on the job, which we shouldn't even be asking for, but that's the way we feel at work now. And we would really appreciate you guys, your guys' support. We really need it.
Thank you. The only thing I would correct or suggest is, in Spanish, super. Not super. El super.
That's super.
El super. So next, yeah, el super, and, and, I mean, that's the way we refer to it in Hispanic. Es el super, como un supermercado, es el super. But, look, I, I want to defer to my colleagues that brought this for making the motion the second, but I hope we get a unanimous vote here. And also, I believe, we have one store in Santa Ana, right? Two. And there, but there's other stores in other cities.
Yes.
So you're doing this in those other cities, we would assume.
Yes, absolutely. Absolutely. Carahia is voting tonight as well.
Excellent.
Huntington Park has already done it. Los Angeles, the City of Los Angeles is also going to take it up next week.
Excellent. How many stores are in Southern California?
There are forty-three stores in California, and then they have four in Arizona and two in Nevada as well. So it's forty-three and...
So it's important. Well, let me defer to my council colleagues that brought this forward.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. First of all, thank you for coming out here. I think it's important that we let people know what's going on in our communities. As a former Santa Ana schoolteacher, I'm still a schoolteacher in Fullerton, but when I was here in Santa Ana, I was able to see firsthand, as I'm sure Councilmember Mesquah is, what happens when you have parents who don't work in jobs that pay a livable wage and that don't have health insurance. Our kids don't have the resources at home, they don't have a quiet place to, to study. More importantly, they're, they have health issues that they're not able to take care of. By saying to this company, el super...
Thank you for that, so.
That, by saying to this company that you need to change your ways and treat your employees with dignity, it trickles down all the way to the child in that family. And it's important that we, as residents in the City of Santa Ana, continue to encourage good jobs. Good jobs, because then our, our, our workers that work here, that work in that super, at that market, can then go ahead and purchase a house. And you know, when you have homeownership, there's, there's, people take care of their, their neighborhoods more. There's an investment in there. It's a huge, huge investment. And so I just wanted to thank you. When, when we talked about this, it was a no-brainer, we have to do this. We've always had that, that paradigm on this council, that we're going to go ahead and protect the family. So I thank you, Rick. I don't know how you guys do this, but you guys have been at it for such a long time, and you still have the energy to do it. So I applaud you for your work, and please tell a friend to boycott el super until they start to treat our workers with dignity. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
You're very welcome. Who else would like to speak? Councilman...
Mayor Pro Tem?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and I think my colleague to the right, to my right, said it well, so there's not much to say. I just want to thank you both for, for bringing this matter. Gilbert, I know that you do a lot of, a lot of very good work, and we've always stood with working families up here, and I know my colleagues and I feel very strongly about making sure that people not only have livable wages, good benefits, but also we care about the quality of care. You know, and I think that's what we're, we're talking about, you know, benefits and salaries and wages. But I understand that there's some, some issues with the way the, you know, the goods are being sold and the conditions that people are working in, and that's a real concern, because we have families that go there and rely on what's intended to be quality service and quality goods being sold to them, and that may not be the case here, and that's a big concern. And that's where your arguments persuaded me to be supportive of this effort. So I want to thank you all for doing the work that you do, not just here, but all over Southern California and throughout the state. So I'll second the motion. I believe Councilman Dinajero made the motion, I'll second that.
Any additional comment, Councilman Mesquah?
As a schoolteacher, I do want to echo what Councilmember Dinajero said. It's so important that our students have their basic needs met in order for them to excel in school. And when they don't come to school, you know, if parents are making livable wages, there's always that issue of, are they providing the basic needs for their children? And I can tell you that a hundred percent, thank you for, for doing all the work you're doing. It's well worth it.
Councilman Benavides, please.
Thank you. I want to thank you, thank my colleagues and UFCW and the, the workers here for bringing this before us. I know that a lot of the employees, majority, if not all, of employees at, at these supermarkets are local residents of, of our community. And it's important that, in our community, that employers provide a fair and dignified work environment. For that reason, there is a process to be able to, for, for the workers themselves to consider forming or participating in a labor organization, a union. And there are laws that require for employers to be able to respect that process. Some of what I, what I've learned through the information you provided for us is one of the things that, that just frustrates, frustrates me, is when there is a lack of dignity and when there is retaliatory action by these large corporations against employees that are simply just looking for fairness and dignity. And you've cited situations where that, where there has been retaliatory action, and that's something that I think, personally, I think all of my colleagues here take a strong stance against. And for that reason, I'll be definitely standing with, with my colleagues, with UFCW, with the workers out there at El Super, and supporting this resolution.
And I want to call on Councilman Roman Reyna, please.
And I share the same sentiments with all of my colleagues, had an opportunity to meet and speak with some of you guys, and so I won't reiterate the same thing, but I just want to thank you for all the hard work that you're doing to, to improve the quality of life for our residents and our families, and so thank you for your hard work.
Thank you. And let me just add that, you know, this is a multi-year struggle, Rick. How many years have you been doing this?
With El, with El super?
No, 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 no.
No, I've, for, for, I've been doing it for thirty-three years, twenty-five here in Orange County, to, to bring justice and, and fairness to the workplace.
And we know that what you do is possible, because you've succeeded in many other places where they have successful operations, people aren't going bankrupt or running people out of business. So what you're asking for is feasible, just and fair. So with that, those in favor, please say aye.
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 Those opposed? It's unanimous, Madam Clerk. Good luck to you all.
Thank you, Mayor, and on behalf of the workers, the community, I want to thank you, Mayor, and the council members for your support. Thank you.
Good luck to you. So with that, I'm now going to go to a public comment, and then Irma, if you could come up, and then Theo Hirsch, and then Wilma Peterson, please.
Good evening, Mayor, council members. It's a joy to come up here and seeing the proposal on CDBG and to see the Pacific Electric Park being funded. You guys have no idea how happy, how emotional to see that a dream, a thought, a vision has black and white numbers. Thank you, thank you. I mean, we, we work sometimes pro, mostly pro on everything, and this is going to be such a turnaround in our community, to see that we can work on something beautiful, and as I said, we will be making Main Street, all of Main Street, a wild place to walk through and drive through. Thank you.
Thank you, Irma. And don't worry, Cecilia, you're, you're right on here, I'll call you shortly.
Okay.
I'll call you shortly. Theo, followed by Wilma, followed by Cecilia Aginawa. So you're coming right up.
I just want to throw something out there that, it's something that actually bothers me every day of my life when I look at my trash, because, because I live in an apartment, and apartment buildings are not really, anyway, they're, they're not recycle-friendly, okay? Let's just put it that way. So anyway, I'm proposing an organized effort in the community to, to do like, community neighborhood gardens and composts. We need a compost and community garden every four blocks or so, so people can have, put all their organic waste in the compost and grow gardens in the communities. I'm kind of tired of not having anywhere to put my organic trash, and a neighborhood garden would be perfect. I think four blocks or so would be a good, good way, every, you know, I don't know how, how, how often you would have these community gardens, or how, how far you would go, but I, I think four to eight blocks or something like that, so people could walk to get to these, you know, some kind of a public property somewhere where we can, you know, people have community and stuff like that. So I propose every four blocks or so, we recruit neighborhood volunteers, take a small piece of public land for compost and garden growing. It's a very simple idea that just needs a little organization by each neighborhood, and we can begin with a pilot neighborhood, so to speak, then expand from one neighborhood to the next. This is an idea that will help people not only be healthier and self-sufficient, but to not be so reliant on for-profit corporate industries that compromise our food and treat us like numbers for their bottom line. This is also an excellent way to create a sense of community and bring people together, obviously. Also, recycling. We need a much more efficient recycle system. I think that Santa Ana should start looking into the future and humanity survivability and be more progressive about recycling, because there's a lot of preliminary trash out there that people just throw in the trash, ends up in the ocean. There's a, there is a island in the Pacific Ocean, twice the size of Texas, and it's made of plastic. Plastic does not biodegrade. The, the oil that we use to make the plastic, does that, it doesn't biodegrade, it just, it just photo degrades into smaller pieces that our fish eat, and then we eat the fish, and so on, so forth. Anyway, so there's a lot of preliminary packaging, a lot of dead trees, we don't need to kill trees, there's a thing called hemp, you know? Marijuana is on its way to be legalized, finally, but, but they don't talk about hemp enough. Hemp is a replacement for murdering trees. Anyway, so...
Theo, if you can conclude, yellow is the new red.
Okay. Anyway, so, anyway, all this stuff that we throw in the trash, you know, all materials that we normally toss, like rubber, wood, glass, plastic, concrete, all this stuff. If we, we could create an industry and take all this stuff that we throw away and put in landfills and dump and stuff like that, and if we could actually make an industry in Santa Ana for the poor, for the homeless...
Now you're red, so that's...
What's that?
You're way out of time, but thank you.
Well, there's not that many people here, so, I mean, I figured...
Understood. Did you see the NAM Eatery presentation earlier today?
No, I didn't.
It's a Vietnamese restaurant here in Down the Chusing, all, you know, recycled materials, and everything that they put out is biodegradable. But thank you for your message, especially so close to Earth Day, it's very appropriate.
Okay, well, yeah, there's, I didn't even scratch the surface, but yeah.
I know you didn't, but you did. Thank you. Wilma, and after that, Cecilia, and then Michael Ibukian, please. Please go ahead.
Hello. Thank you for listening. I'm new to Santa Ana. I bought a home here a year and a half ago, and I checked the neighborhood and everything very carefully before I bought. I was very impressed with Santa Ana. That was a year and a half ago. Things are deteriorating in our neighborhood, and I'm asking for help for speed bumps. I live on Brook and Sheldon, right by McFadden.
Can you give us your address, please?
Ten thirty West Brook Street. We are having issues with three hit and runs in the last two months. Actually, there's more, but those are the only three that were reported. It's getting very serious. The driving is crazy. If we had speed bumps, there's going to be little kids getting killed there. I can guarantee it. We have a daycare center there, and it's very dangerous, what's happening. And the hit and runs, the drunk drivers, the graffiti, the gangs are moving in. And we've got to do something, and I don't know who to go to to ask for help.
Do you know what ward you're in?
No.
Ward five? All right, so, look, you're going to meet with Councilman Roman Reyna. He'll bring in the city manager or chief of police or other department, if that's appropriate, and we'll follow up. and we'll follow up.
Thank you very much.
Can you just leave your information with the clerk, and we'll follow up. Thank you. Cecilia, you're up.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Mr. Proton Mayor, members of the council. My name is Cecilia Aginaga, and I'm your appointed board trustee representing the city of Santa Ana for the Orange County Mosquito and Vector Control District. April 20 to the 24th is Mosquito Awareness Week, and the Orange County Mosquito and Vector Control District would like to make you aware of few important messages. I would like to invite Jared Dever. He is the director of communications up to the podium to share this information with you. Thank you, Jared.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor, members of the councils. A pleasure to speak with you again this evening. So I stand before you this evening, though, just to kind of remind you, though, as you're all aware, that 2014 was the worst year on record for West Nile virus in Orange County. And in fact, the county actually accounted for 10% of the total West Nile virus cases in the entire United States, 81 of which were Santa Ana residents. So those are some staggering numbers to take in as we move into 2015. So at this time, the district is actually quite concerned that many of the same environmental conditions that helped fuel the West Nile virus expansion in 2014 are still present in 2015. The record drought has continued into its fourth year, which means that a lot of the watering practices that we've asked of our residents have some very unintended and very unfortunate consequences. One of those very unfortunate consequences is residents have taken it upon themselves to follow recommendations made by water districts, cities, and the county at large, and that's to not top off their swimming pools, to not keep those pools in service. So we did conduct our annual aerial surveillance, where we fly the entire county, and we look for unknown mosquito breeding sources in backyards. We were very disappointed to discover 3,000 new out-of-service swimming pools in the county. In the course of 12 months, 3,000 residents have decided to stop maintaining their pools, which greatly contributes to the threat of West Nile virus and other mosquito-borne illnesses. So in the city of Santa Ana, at the end of 2014, you had only 62 out-of-service swimming pools that we had on our catalogs that we were inspecting and treating. This latest aerial surveillance has revealed 203 new out-of-service swimming pools in the city of Santa Ana. So under the right conditions, as you know, these pools can produce hundreds of thousands of mosquitoes every seven days. So it's imperative that our technicians gain access to these properties so that we can inspect them and treat them and prevent any further disease in your city. So we're asking the public to report any unknown out-of-service swimming pools if our technicians have not been in contact with you thus far. And then when our inspectors ask for access to your properties, to please grant them that they're there to do important public health work, and contact the district to report any out-of-service swimming pools, and dump and drain. I know it's the winter months, but we need to treat this, if you notice the temperatures outside, as though it's the middle of summer.
If I may, Mr. City Manager and Madam City Attorney, is there a way that we could assist vector control? Let's say they find a swimming pool somewhere, and they know that the level's down, it's not being maintained, it's going to become a mosquito breeding ground, and yet we're going to come back and say, please don't spray, because we don't want you spraying. But what I'm asking staff, and maybe they could come back to council, would be maybe some way we could assist. I know we have community preservation officers, we have neighborhood associations, we have all sorts of resources that vector control may or may not have, and I think it's incumbent upon all of us to assist. Go ahead, Mayor Protem.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I think I would agree. It's a tricky problem, because, you know, we'd have to get releases and waivers from property owners to be able to gain access. I understand what we would be trying to accomplish, which is more than anything, just being able to treat these, you know, areas that are dangerous. And we all know that, to the extent we can address some of these, this prevents you having to go out and spray.
That's correct.
And that's a benefit to the entire community. So I don't know if we could get a blanket waiver. I don't think that exists.
But maybe a plan, maybe an approach.
But maybe there's a way that we can try to maybe define the area, or where you have some intelligence. In other words, you have some information on what properties and maybe what areas are more intense, and maybe there's a way that through our code enforcement, as the mayor said, we can just work collaboratively. The good thing is that, you know, our representative at the vector control is doing a great job. She brought you here. I'm glad there's communication now. There's a lot more than what we've seen in the past, so it's a good thing. And I think we're talking about exactly what we should be, which are next steps in being productive.
Your success is our success. Councilman Mesqua?
A lot of the neighborhood associations have newsletters that they publish, and, you know, send emails to the residents. I wonder if that's a good place to start, just informing them, if you have a swimming pool and you're not using it, and you're not maintaining it, please, you know, come out and let us know. We can help you.
Certainly. That'd be a wonderful start.
Yes, hold on, just one more. Counselor Self, can I help?
No, I was witness to what West Nile does to someone. A teacher at the Santa Ana Unified School District, who I taught with at Lathrop Intermediate, was caught West Nile virus, and it completely paralyzed him. It took him months to start walking again. This is a serious, serious disease out there, and I think we have to be very careful. And sometimes we have to go out and assure that we're taking care of the public, because sometimes misinformation gets out there. But I'm glad that you're still keeping it on our radar. Thank you for coming out.
Could I request, maybe, that city manager, city attorney, some of the council members work, and may you bring it back, because this is a public safety issue?
Yes, Mayor.
May you bring back some approach or something, and if we have to take any votes for action, I'm sure we're ready to do so. We want to cooperate. Thank you.
Appreciate that. Thank you.
Thank you. So with that, Michael, are you here? Come on down, Michael. And George, I know you passed up speaking earlier, but now you want to speak again, so this time get ready, because you'll be right up. Go ahead, Michael.
Mr. Mayor, Honorable Counsel Michael Klubnik. And I feel like Rodney Dangerfield here. Mr. Mayor, I mean, oh, the three minutes, the last time you only gave me two. Who's county? I don't want to come over there, but I'm here on a very serious note. You guys talked about West Nile virus, how an innocent little thing could almost destroy people's lives. What's happened across the street, board of supervisors, unholy alliances with the district attorney, yes, Tony Ricotta's district attorney, the same district attorney that pulled Eili's son out of his home. Today, the district attorney said, yeah, he will take a case and move forward with it based on a sniffing dog testimony. And yet he'll ignore 89 complaints that I filed, saying that there's an illegal cover-up, took, say, four properties, didn't pay the mortgage. I'm not making this up. You got the documents. Didn't pay a mortgage for nine months, and then sell the property for $50 cents, $100, then they give it to their buddy, the fiduciary, and then he sells the property free and clear, occupied, curtain with rent, $200,000 cash in the bank, and they cover it up. I'm here to tell you, if they've got that shenanigans going on, if they get a flu, you guys are going to get cancer. I'm telling you. They have brought cancer to this county with these unholy alliances, the district attorney, internal auditor, county council, public defender, the list goes on. They're making these reckless cover-ups, and they're going to cost. It's like cancer. It attacks your cell, but once it hits the organ, it's too late. And you guys are the cell. You're one of 34 counties in Orange County. They're the organ. And if they're like riverboat gamblins, and making these, you know, attacking the major organs of the body, you guys are going to suffer, you and your constituents. And I know you guys, I saw how you're solidarity with these people. Every time I come here, you treat people with respect. Over there, it's me, myself, and I, and how I can take a bow to make, you know, my political nest. You guys aren't that way, and I commend you for that. But I'm telling you, Eili's not here today. He's going to be in court tomorrow. No attorney. He's going to stand. He's going to beg the court. They're killing my son. Can anybody help me? It's out of your jurisdiction. He goes, ever in city count, out of their jurisdiction, he goes to board of supervisor, out of their jurisdiction. Something's not right with this picture. Eili should not have had his kid ripped from him like he's some kind of criminal. He's not here now, but I'm sure there's a problem with his son. But he's going to be in court tomorrow. I'm pleading on your behalf. If there's anything you could do, call, rattle the cage, you know, something. Somebody's got to be a hero. But I'm telling you, that 21-year cycle, bankruptcy plus 21 years, 2015. We're on the cusp, and if they're doing the shenanigans over the board of supervisors, you guys are going to suffer the consequences, because cancer is indiscriminate. It'll attack the good cells and the bad cells.
Thank you, Michael.
It's not red yet, though.
No, but yellow is the new red.
Oh, it is. Okay.
Thank you.
I heard you say that.
Thank you for coming down, and now it's red. Look at that. Now it's red. George, come on down. Show them how it's done.
Good evening, Mayor, council members, city manager, chief of police, Rojas. I would just like to say that we need to do more in relation to climate change. I saw a program on E-Square on KCET, the same channel that Mayor Garcetti grew up on from LA, you know, very good informative channel, that we need to recycle what we use. Now, I would like to ask the council and the mayor to ban plastic bags. I've been seeing them for years and years and years. I call them plastic tumbleweeds, all right? They're everywhere. Nobody cares, I mean. I talked to the newcomers. Oh, you know, this is, you know, I'm just here to make the money. I don't care. I thought we had laws on the books to prevent, you know, trash, you know, the littering, and it's not being enforced. There's so many, we've got so many books, laws on the books that aren't being enforced. I can't understand why we even have a assembly, state assembly. Anyhow, I would just like to say that, from my New Testament and Psalms here, it says righteousness exalts a nation. That's Proverbs 1434, okay? Now, we got to do the right thing, because, I mean, this is for our children and our children's children. I just found out I have a grandson. I have a 35-year-old daughter in Australia. She has a son, beautiful kid. I just found out last week. So it's like this. I'm a grandfather. I can't believe it. Anyhow, probably will be making a trip to Australia soon to meet my newfound daughter and my grandson. Anyhow, I'm just saying there's more that we need to be done in relation to conserving water, recycling, ban plastic bags, because those are made with oil as well. And also, I just wanted to bring up a note that my T-shirt says, "A free people ought not only to be armed, but disciplined." That's from George Washington, okay? And I'm thinking, oh, well, then the Constitution mandates that we have a militia, a well-formed militia for security of the state, because there are, the FBI has opened up cases in 49 states, okay? I don't know which is the that isn't, but 49 states on ISIS. This worries me. We just caught, you know, I mean, if they want to go, let them go, but just don't let them come back. I mean, they're not born here. These are Somalis, immigrants that got refugee money, you know, business loans with no interest. This, I can't understand this. What happened to the Native American?
George, it said, "but also disciplined," right?
Yes, sir.
And the light is now red, but thank you. Thank you, George. Thank you for your words. They're much appreciated. Martin, it's Lon Martin, maybe? Loani Martin? Come on down, please. And then Ramon Hernandez. And after that, Pierre Espino, I believe it is. Please go ahead.
Good evening. Thank you. My name's Lori, and I did not have good penmanship this evening. I'm actually a principal here in Santa Ana. We're opening up a brand-new public charter, Vista Heritage Charter School. I just wanted to make you aware that we were here, and we wanted to say hi, and we welcome you to see our charter school. We're in Fairview and off of West Fifth Street. So I just want...
Fairview and?
Fairview and Fifth.
And Fifth?
Yes, we're at Templon.
Okay.
What district is that? So you may ought to meet with him as well. He'll be busy. Thank you for coming down and for presenting yourself to us. Ramon, and after Ramon, Pierre Espino?
Good evening, esteemed city council. My name is Ramon Hernandez. I want to applaud my neighbor, Wilma, for coming down here and speaking on behalf of our neighborhood of Pico Loa. I'm the neighborhood president of Pico Loa. So she just mentioned the three hit-and-runs in the past two months. I think one happened in November, where the guy hit a car on the side of the street, and he wanted to go away on foot, and all the neighbors got together, and they all apprehended him. And, you know, that's just one of many hit-and-runs that are happening, but that's just one of many things that are going on in our neighborhood, you know? Everything from that to cars speeding through the street, through Shelton Street, where we, in between McFadden and Bishop, we have no speed bumps, but there's speed bumps on the surrounding areas. I would like some speed bumps. I know there are reasons why we don't have any, but, I mean, also, there are reasons why we should have some. Other than that, we have produce trucks that have decided to squat in our neighborhood. They don't move. They never move. I know that topic has been brought up at past council meetings. Back in November of 2013, there was a walkthrough in the neighborhood with the city manager and the council members. I wasn't there because I hadn't, I wasn't involved then, but I know we've been asking for an update from, and I've seen, I've seen change, positive change in the neighborhood, but I would like an official update, you know? You know, what's been going on, what's going on, what's going to happen, where are we at as far as the food trucks go, you know, things of that in nature. But I definitely want to commend my neighbors for coming out. And the more, I mean, the more neighbors I get to come out, the more you're going to see me. So thank you very much. I know the yellow is the new red. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you, Ramon. And I know that Councilman Reyna is going to be following up on some of those things. May we can include that as well. It's your night tonight. It's your night tonight. Pierre Espino, I believe it is? And I may have the name wrong here, but P-I-E-R-R-O.
You're on.
I got it?
Yeah, definitely.
Thank you.
I'd like to thank everyone for being here. Third time, I believe. And I never my intention to be here, which I love. My friend Theo was just coming along, so I thought I'd say hi and share some thoughts. I had real, true intentions to share, I guess, what they call propositions or declarations, to follow through with some things. So I held my fingers to consider them. If I could share a story, I came back from Texas with my godson, and this is really, really nice. We get visited by bees. The bad intention of it is done with chemicals to remove them. It was always a tragic feeling until I realized there's support, like the backyard bees and other things. From there, I decided to call them, got them safely removed. It was a beautiful experience. I spoke with one of the tenants who works there, and he shared with me a story of his grandfather, talking about the land where he was from. Half of the town was plowed to create housing. It was all trees. They said a huge tornado ripped through everything, destroyed everything of the new housing, and right before it reached the trees, it dissipated. And so the entire town decided to plant trees again. That, for me, has been a very moving thing to hear, since my whole intention is to bring back trees, bring back life, respect, appreciation, all these things. So that's my first thing. My father was a part of creating the cement channels, all the water channels we have through Santa Ana, all the way up. And I realize that that's brought our understanding of how to control water. Now we need to understand and come back to our natural state, and find that balance between civilization and nature. So what I'm proposing is that we really get together and just bring nature back. Plant as many plants as we have to, all the way through the Santa Ana River, create natural water channels, like all the channels that we got blocked off. The reason why people litter so much is because there's nothing to cherish there. And so we get all this trash that goes out into the ocean. But that simple change could be done if we open all these up. I've spoken with Moet, and, you know, he's already been doing it. And there's so many people, of course, doing some wonderful things, but there's another person I got to meet who shares that type of thought. If we just open up all the water channels that we have that are blocked off, make them into bike trails, all that type of wonderful things, put fruit trees everywhere, let everyone live in some abundancy, also, of course, bring, you know, police to scout, go everything, keep everything safe, which is, I know, the water channel got closed off, off of valley. I live off of Fairview and McFadden, and that was my first example, to see that water channel just go into the worst thing ever.
Pierre, thank you. It's red, but thank you for your spirit and your thoughts.
Right over here, I believe we're in the district, and so, yeah.
Another meeting.
Honored. Thank you again.
Good. So with that, Roman has like five meetings out of this. This is good. Let's go ahead. City manager, any comments this evening?
Yes, Mayor, very brief comments. We've had three budget meetings. They've been well-attended. We have two more, one on the 23rd and one on the 28th of April, and we encourage people to participate. The 20th Annual Summer Youth Job Fair will be held Saturday, and we've got lots of jobs, not only in the private sector, but the city's hiring interns this summer. And then, believe it or not, Cinco de Mayo Festival, May 1st through the 3rd downtown. Very excited, wonderful entertainment, and we encourage everybody to participate. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. And with that, we have six minutes, and it's... And with that, we have six minutes, and it's still not even seven o'clock yet, so let's go over to the left.
Thank you, Mayor.
Angie.
Just a quick thanks to Mr. Mark Payan. I did have the opportunity last Wednesday to get out there and work out with the Payanix group over in Santa Ana Stadium. It was a really good workout. If anyone is interested, it's Monday, Wednesdays, Fridays. It's free community workout session for anybody who wants to get up at 5:00 in the morning. It was really fun, so I encourage anyone that wants to get fit to get out there and work out.
Thank you. Councilor Roman Reyna, please.
Sure. Like always, as you can tell, we have some serious water issues the first time in our history that the state is actually mandating a reduction. So it's very imperative that we all conserve water, but more importantly, just be water-wise. Everybody changes their consumption a little bit differently, it'll definitely go a long way. So please be water-wise. Second, this past weekend, we had an opportunity to participate in Relay for Life, phenomenal event. They actually exceeded their goal of $25,000, so definitely applause to all the chairmans and people that were involved with that. I know myself and my colleague had an opportunity to kick it off. I was there for the entire 24 hours and still trying to catch up to that sleep. My age is catching up to me. But I think this is a phenomenal, phenomenal event. This is something that transcends every line that you could think out there. It's not a young person or an old person, or Republican or Democrat, or anything in between. This is something that truly unites the entire community or has the potential of doing so. And with that, within that, I'm gonna challenge people next year to participate. I'm gonna challenge the business community, the school districts and different clubs that exist, the city and the different departments that are out there, the nonprofits, to come together to really advocate and showcase that we can come together for a common issue and fight a horrible disease, in this case, cancer. So I definitely gonna put the challenge out there to you guys. Second, third, fourth, wherever we're at, this coming weekend is Semiannual Youth Conference at the Boys and Girls Club with partnership. We have over 100 students registered for a free 23-hour event for high school students to participate in self-growth and to dedicate 23 hours is absolutely huge. So if you have some time, please come out this weekend at the Santa Ana Boys and Girls Club. Really doesn't matter what time, because we'll be there. Let's see, shopping Santa Ana like always, and before we do, before I do finish, tomorrow is Administrative Assistance Day. So I definitely want to thank all of our administrators, assistants that are, that contribute to the overall scheme of services to our community. Many times, you're behind the scenes, many times, you're not on the radar, but your work is imperative for the overall team and making it very successful. We cannot do it without you, so I definitely wanted to give you guys as much kudos as possible. Thank you very much. Have a good day.
Thank you very much for that. Councilor Benavides, please.
Thank you, Mayor. Wanted to ask our staff for, we had an item on the agenda earlier, and there was some question regarding the Ron Santillado Community College District and providing a couple of modulars to the city over at Centennial. But it did, it did, one of the questions, and a question I had as well, just seeking an update on the Centennial Education Center and potential relocation, extension of lease, and that question, there's been some, we've been in conversations with them for some time. There's a couple of, over two acres there that are in question as to whether they would be coming back for public space or whether we would be potentially permanently giving it away. And so, want to make sure that we're brought into the loop on the progress in those conversations. They're at that same park, right across the way, actually, from the current education center. There's a skate park, which is very well utilized by a lot of the young people in our city. It's the only one that we currently have. I know that there is an item on the agenda for the Board of Park and Recreation tomorrow to discuss the topic of skate parks throughout the city. Councilwoman Martinez, myself, were at a meeting, a neighborhood meeting last, a few weeks ago, where the topic came up. Just want to get a brief to the council. There are pockets throughout the city where there are very limited recreation opportunities for young people, and it's just an opportunity for, the health opportunity, fitness opportunity, but then also just something that, positive activities for young people to be involved in. I think that we should start looking at other areas where we could potentially expand our skate park and create a skate park system, our network within the city. You mentioned City Manager, it's Cinco de Mayo coming up. You know, one of the things I often mention, it's just, Santa Ana's an exciting city and place to be, and the first weekend in May is actually one of the most exciting of the year. It happens to be both Art Walk and Cinco de Mayo brought together. So our downtown will be very active, and want to encourage folks to come out. And with that, support the city, support business and culture in our community, and to shop and spend a few bucks supporting local jobs and local business, and have a great time. So with that...
Thank you. Thank you. And with that, former Mayor Potem Salteina head on.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Appreciate it. I like to be remembered. I appreciate the history. It was a great event this week. I was able to go to the McFadden Intermediate 50th Anniversary. It was really nice because I got to meet the first principal at McFadden Intermediate, and it was, it was nice to go down memory lane. I was able to see some pictures of some old friends back in the 80s, which was interesting. Hairstyles and the dress was interesting. I also was allowed to be principal for a day. I didn't mess up the school too much. It was, it was pretty good, so I had a good time there. I was also at the Relay for Life. I was looking for you, Roman, and Councilmember Benavides. I was at the Relay for Life. I went in, put a check in, took a sip of some coconut juice, and left. They said, "Aren't you gonna walk the track?" I said, "No, I came to give my support this way." You know, I didn't want to, I was checking my pulse. No, it was great. A great event, and I do, I do agree. I think we could do some more, and I think that they exceeded their expectations, which was great, great. The reason why I'm just really excited today is I was driving in, I was driving over to the city. One of the things that I noticed is, the school district has done a great job of really building up their infrastructure and their fields and their facilities. The tennis courts look beautiful. They have artificial turf in a lot of different areas. The sports complex is coming up, and we've done the same. And it's just what a difference a couple of years makes, you know, with, and you could, you could see the pride in our parents when they talk about it. And then, more importantly, our students and our kids are excited to now go and participate in sports, in these sports that once were dormant. I was driving down McFadden Intermediate, and it was jam-packed. The tennis courts were jam-packed with kids. And I thought, wow, we're really making strides, and it's everyone putting a little bit of effort into different areas, and everyone's passionate about something. And I just, I just want to say, let's just keep it going. We have a great group up here, we have a great quarterback here in the city, and a great staff. And I just want to applaud everyone, because honestly, people are starting to see the turnaround, not just in the downtown, but all over the city. And I'm just really proud today. I'm proud to be a part of this team. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, and thank you for that. Now to our current Mayor Potem.
And, you know, we just broke 7 o'clock, so I was hoping we...
I know. I was too. So at this point, you can talk a lot. Because we're not gonna be able to tell them a show. We are here before 7:00.
Now I'll speak freely. No, I'm just kidding. I'll keep it brief, but I also wanted to thank staff as well. And talking about Relay for Life, Mr. City Manager, I wanted to commend one of your staff members, because even though I didn't spend 24 hours on the track, what I did in advance was, I think there was an issue with respect to the site. It was at the Santa Ana College, and there was issues with the food not being able, being able to be brought there by some of the vendors, and that's the way they, they raise funds, is they sell some of their food there, and licenses and permits from the Health Department were hard to get at the last moment. But Mark Lawrence from our staff, the staff from the Santa Ana College, trustee Solorio and Alvarez helped out, and Chancellor Raul Rodriguez and all of us got together and said, "Look, we have to be able to make this work." So please, kudos to everybody, and especially Mark for doing that at the last moment. It was a very 11th-hour thing, but, look, those things make that event successful, because if you can't raise money, then what's the point in raising awareness? It's sort of their lifeblood. But I wanted to thank everybody, and I'd thank you and your staff again for the upcoming budget, because what we're looking at now is we're looking at realizing things like, you know, the Pacific Electric Park. We have an opportunity to bring in another park online, Standard and McFadden, which is not part of our park system, but it might be able to be absorbed. And, you know, it's just a very exciting time, because now when I speak to people, we're talking about dreaming, about realizing things that we once only thought were, you know, weren't possibilities because the funds were so tight. So thank all of you for hanging in there with us, and especially the folks over in South Maine. I know there's some settlement funds that we had a nice conversation with the board over there about them giving us some direction about what they'd like to see after, after some discussion with everybody. But, look, I think that South Maine is the next downtown. I truly believe that. And I think with OCTA's help, I think they're gonna help us slow down the traffic. We turn it into a district that we can brand for merchants to be successful, and it's not just a pass-through corridor anymore. I think we'll be able to really change lives, make it an exciting place, and we shouldn't just have it downtown. We have 350,000 people here. We should be able to have more clusters of areas where people can go enjoy themselves and have a good time. So that's gonna be the next, the next big place here in the city. Finally, I want to thank everybody who's been conserving water. We've done a great job, and I saw an email from the city manager saying that we're gonna be leading by example and trying to reduce our consumption as well. But since we came out, and I seen the Beal in the audience, since we came out and did the voluntary request for people to reduce their consumption, we've gone down 4% from an already very, very low increment compared to other communities. So thank you to all the residents for doing that, and it's not a simple thing to do. We all love our beautiful lawns, but I think all of us are gonna be, including me, are gonna be reducing our water consumption, and our lawns may be getting a little bit more yellow, a little bit more brown, but hopefully it's a temporary thing, and the hydrology changes and the climate changes, and we're able to get more, you know, more rainwater and just, you know, better recycling efforts, and we'll be back to where we were. But with that, I want to wish everybody a safe Cinco de Mayo and a good night. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. And I just have two items. One is that I agree that, you know, things are going better and better and better in the city, but I have maybe a little bit of a longer perspective. I see things like, you know, Bristol Street, that's taken us literally many, many, many years to get to where we are now, although now we're starting to see the benefit, but it's been, believe me, a multi-decade project. I see things like the federal courthouse, that in the 90s, we were fighting Irvine to bring it here to Santa Ana. Now it's a gorgeous, you know, Ronald Reagan federal courthouse. I see the Fourth District Court of Appeal and the big battle we had with UCI to win that and bring it here. I mean, I see, you know, Bowers and the record numbers of people coming to Bowers and such a beautiful museum that it's now become. I remember when it was empty, and they were ready to give us the keys back, and they were saying, "We don't really want to operate anymore." And now look at it. I mean, I see the Science Center now, one of the top 20 in the country, and how well it's doing. I see the zoo and some of the exciting projects that are there, but just as an organization, an institution, there's just more and more people visiting the zoo. I see, you know, Modern Day High School. I remember when they were getting ready to leave the city. The Diocese was really saying, "We're gonna close down Modern Day and move it to South County, move it somewhere else," and we fought hard to keep it here. Now it's not only here. Boy, if you've gone to Modern Day lately, it's amazing what they've, what they've done there on campus. And, you know, I see our schools in general throughout the city with the different school bonds that we passed, not only at the college, but also at the Unified District, and even, and I say even, because sometimes we don't focus much on, on the west end, but over in Garden Grove, the schools are doing well as well on the, you know, west of the river. And I see beautiful projects like the Skyline, that I believe if we work hard and push folks, those high-rise projects will come again to the city, and they're really, really beautiful assets that were done years ago, but now it's all coming together, and it's just singing a beautiful, beautiful song. And talking about beautiful things, we had an employee here, Sharon Kay Henigan, who was with us 23 years. She gave a lot of her life to the city, and unfortunately, she recently passed away. I just want to say a few things about Sharon and then close in her honor. She was born to a military family in 1959, July 5th, to be exact. She began her career shortly after graduating college here in the city of Santa Ana. She began as an administrative assistant, and then she became a contract employee to the city's Cable Television Division. She then worked on a series of projects, came back in the city manager's office, and many of you, I know Fran, for example, you'll remember her well. You know, she was in the Finance Department and the Community Development Department. You know, she was a great listener. She was intelligent. She was organized. She was always respectful, genuine in her interactions, loved by her fellow employees. And after many years here, in about 2010, her husband Darrell was diagnosed with an operable brain tumor. And so she retired. She left the city to go take care of him. Unfortunately, he passed away relatively quickly. And so after that great, difficult, tragic event, she decided to un-retire and came back to the city here in 2012. And then, unfortunately, after she came back, she also contracted cancer. So not only having your husband die of cancer, now you have cancer. She had cancer, you know, she, she had to retire again, and unfortunately, very recently, April 12th, she lost her battle to cancer. And now she leaves, you know, three beloved young daughters as her survivor. And one of her daughters, Kelsey, wrote something that I'm gonna read, but I also want to mention her other daughter, Kendra, and also her mother, Shirley Lewinsky, who are now along with her sisters and brothers, the survivors. But her daughter, Kelsey, wrote this, and she read it recently at her memorial. She said, "It is with my heart hanging heavy and within my chest, an impossible weight, a choked cotton-dry ball clinging to my throat, and eyes bleary from too many tears shed for one day that I share these news. She passed, rounded by loved ones at 8:39 Sunday night. Words far short, they fail me in the moment I most desperately grasp for their help to convey my simultaneous grief and anger and anxiety over the loss. My sense of relief and acceptance of the cessation of her pain, the suffering that grew so fierce these past few days. My longing for her, missing her presence, already and knowing the absence that will only grow sharper and more suffocating as time pulls me further from her memory. I seek something to help me convey the grace of my mother, honor of her memory, and celebrate her bright light, but everything feels too contrived, too cliché against such a fresh wound. In Leo flowers, please consider a donation, her honor, to the World Hunger Project, the cause Mom and Dad supported as long as I can remember." And, you know, Sharon was such a lovely person. All of those that had the privilege and the honor and the blessing of working with her, I think should take, you know, her suffering and lesson, just cherish everything we have and to thank God for every day that we have, every moment that we have, all the blessings that we have, because for her, death definitely came too soon. And now she leaves her young daughters, and obviously well-educated and are able to speak so eloquently, but, you know, she is now gone. And so, Madam Clerk, if we can please, you know, dedicate not only the closing of this meeting, but also give the family the heartfelt condolences, and I hereby adjourn this meeting in her memory.